We'll call our meeting to order. Our first session begins with our first agenda item, which is the Budget Committee meeting. Budget Committee meeting. Welcome to all the members of the Budget Committee who are joining us here and online.
Oh, sorry. It was Frank.
My host will be there a few minutes later, but we will catch up as we go. Michelle?
All right. Thank you, Chair Watson. If you guys can imagine, I'm excited to be here again talking about the budget. It's a big focus of our work because we've done so much to prepare this in alignment with our new strategic plans. We've got some information to share with you about that. Special thanks to all of our Budget Committee members. We have Don Wallace. I think I saw everybody online who's not here. Michael Smith, position three, is vacant currently. We have Christine Adams-Wanberg, Stephanie Fandor, Ian King, and Kim Strelchin here.
I was kind of confused that we had an applicant or two for the vacant.
We have two applications that came in late in the process to join us and they were invited to do this. It's the public table and that would be Bob Chamberlain and Soramina Reyes. So they have been invited to come see how our process works.
But there's really no point in adding to the community with the last.
Correct, correct. And we do have two positions that will be vacant at the end of the year. We'll be looking for applications for that as well.
Is Christine going to be able to stay on?
I hope so. Yes?
Well, give her the magnitude of her job.
She's got a thumbs up.
Oh, is that a thank you, Christine? You know, I mean, you know, she does a small job now.
Christine, call me if you need some accommodation.
I think I'm good, but thank you. I'm good.
Before we begin here with our, we do have an actual agenda for the Budget Committee meeting. We're going to follow that, but this is the third of three meetings scheduled specifically to share information about the upcoming budget. You shouldn't see or hear anything tonight that looks a whole lot different than what we've already shared, which is good news. Just to note that instead of Hittens under the request of Superintendent Scott, we will be integrated something a little different tonight. So what you'll see are some images of items that he may be packing up as he empties his office. In honor of his final Budget Committee session.
I do have one more evaluation to write.
All right, so this follows along the agenda. We need to elect a chair to conduct the meeting. It is separate committee than the board and includes the board, but it's expanded. So we need to elect a chair. Superintendent Scott will give his budget message. We'll be walking you through the proposed document, not page by page, but just a high-level overview of what you can expect to find in there. There will be some budget cleaning discussion. There will be a period of public comment and then either tonight or at an additional meeting later, we'll approve it for adoption and move forward. So like that, Chair Watson.
Feels like it's the original meeting.
Do we like do a motion and all the things? I'm going to appoint Chair Watson as our Budget Committee Chair.
It's been moved by Director Allen and seconded by Budget Committee member Strelchin that I be appointed to the Chair of the Budget Committee for the purposes of conducting this meeting, joining further discussion. Joining objection? What's your carries?
Next step on the agenda is for our superintendent to deliver budget everything. Again, we actually need to go. What's the thing? Absolutely, they're applications. They're a little bit unfamiliar to our generation, so I my own slides, so it got a little bit ahead there. This is a quill. It is actually a feather dipped in and reserved in order to write on paper.
Actually, it was the first career event and they didn't change it.
Are we done? There's not.
Is he privy to the, is he privy to the?
These are all things that she's claimed I had in my office when I Yes.
Deserve that.
I was just wondering, Michelle, if these items happen to their circle.
In accordance with our S 394, 391, I submit to you the Hillsborough School District 1J proposed 2324 budget. As I prepare the final budget message of my superintendency, I cannot help but reflect on the past 14 years. When I took over as superintendent in the spring of 2009, we were just beginning to feel the effects of the economic downturn that started in late 2008. Over the following six years, our net reductions totaled nearly $60 million, including eighteen law school fees, from what would have been our actual service level year over year. Things started to turn around in 1415 when the grand bargain generated additional money for school districts. Then largely plateaued for the next two years with a modest increase in 2015-16 and a slight decrease in 2016-17. The 1718 school year saw another sizable dip of 7.7 million. 2018-19 brought more than 5.5 million reductions and 2019-20 required cuts in excess of 10.6 million. It's interesting to note that the Oregon Legislature passed this Student Success Act in the 2019 session. However, the Corporate Activities Act funding mechanism were not continued until 2020. And none of us knew at that time that a pandemic was headed our way. The COVID years of 2021 and 2122, so many operational changes, it'd be difficult to summarize in short order. District staff did participate in the state's board share program in state-owned and board-owned in May, June, and July in 2020. Navigated the wholesale conversion of comprehensive distance learning for the majority of 2021 and finally returned to in-person schooling in 2021-22. Although by all accounts, this past school year, 2223, has been the first set of seem more normal. The district received three rounds of pandemic relief funds over the COVID years and has been judicious in the spending and banking of the money of the maximum allowable time. Heading into the 2325 Biennium, we have approximately $15 million in S R 3 funds remaining. Those funds will help weather the $10.2 million shortfall. We anticipate the co-chairs' current $9.9 billion state school fund proposal. However, because they expire on September 30, 2024, and due to their temporary nature, we know that they are not a long-term solution for our funding concerns. Providing a bit of history hopefully highlights the reality that the school district funding is precarious and requires our vigilance to ensure that other budgetary pressures at the state level do not continue with ZDODA. Not only is there competition for state-level budget allocations between education and other social services and operational needs, but there is also decline in enrollment. These declines are being seen across the state, the country, and even the world as people are deciding to wait longer to have children, having fewer in addition to some families choosing alternative educational settings. The Hillsborough School District has experienced this decline in enrollment, even as our community continues to grow. All this is to say that the next two years will be a very interesting time for us. We will likely be in a position to weather the 2325 Biennium with our staffing and programming largely intact, thanks to the remaining S R 3 funded. However, we know with certainty that these funds will not be available in the 2025-27 Biennium. So over the next two years, we need to continue our advocacy for stable and adequate funding at the state level, closely monitor our enrollment, and then be very strategic about how we move forward from there. For context, if the district did not have remaining S R 3 funds, to help mitigate the 10.2 million shortfall, we would experience over the 2325 Biennium at the 9.9 billion funding level. It would be equivalent to the following: 78 teaching positions, or 136 support positions, or an increase to the ratio of licensed staff to students, with an increase of average class size of 3.92 students, or 10.1 spread. Clearly, that is not the situation we want to find ourselves in yet again, especially as we continue to support students with higher levels of need coming out of the pandemic or ask to enact state-level initiatives like working pay penalty and additional operational requirements and endeavor to recruit, train, and retain quality staff, among many other priorities. Although the state school fund has not yet been finalized as of the time of this writing, we are planning our expenditures assuming the 9.9 billion level while continuing to advocate for the 10.3 bill, which is broadly determined to be the actual service level requirement statewide. In order to be prepared for any additional funds the legislature may allocate above the 9.9 billion level, we have planned for general fund appropriations at the 10.3 billion level. That way, we will have secured approval from the school board in advance and can operate at higher levels immediately. A look back at our funding situation in this department and certain costs and certainly cause for our collective attention and concern. It is also heartening to list all the amazing accomplishments we've made over the past 14 years. We have a thriving blue light program that spans more than a third of our schools and varying levels and includes more than 3,300 students. Our Career and College Pathways Program is a model across the state and region. There are more than 16 unique courses offered in our high schools. We have vastly expanded our preschool and other school activities and our graduation rate has grown. We have more opportunities for students to achieve their goals once they leave our system. It's been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve as the superintendent these past 14 years. We have such a strong and dedicated community. I know our students, staff, and schools will continue to be in great hands moving forward. Please stay involved and partner with all of us in important work, improving the lives of our employees. As always, I remain and invite you to be proud to be HSD.
In my rush to hear Mike's message, we skip past an important bit about the Budget Committee and the role of the Budget Committee and that is something that we shared during orientation, which is basically make sure that folks that are accepting an appointment to serve in this role understand that it's not necessarily the Budget Committee's role to adjust programming or staffing levels or anything like that. It's more at a higher level to the community, being a key communicator and setting our appropriation levels in alignment with the board and our tax levels. Those are formalities that the Budget Committee does. And HSD, we do believe that you are, again, key communicators. We try to inform early and often about the budget as well as give information throughout the year. So just a note on the committee role, just to be clear about that. It'll be better when I have help with the slides evidently. So Mike, Superintendent Scott's budget message will be included in the approved version of the document. It's not in there now. For those of you who haven't had a chance to look at it, the proposed document has never included the message because it doesn't occur until tonight, but it will be included moving forward. Figure two is commonly known as phonograph. Again, something that's maybe not familiar to the newer generations.
There is so much notes.
All right, so quickly, not quickly, but I know that we're a little bit time-sensitive tonight. Just an overview of the budget document. It is and has been available in the board packet as well as a link directed to it from the meeting page. I do want to give a special shout out to Jeff Jones, who is with us tonight as always is really the key illustrator of the document itself, which has gone through some pretty amazing improvements. Also Christine Woodard, Nathan DePinto in our office, Assistant Superintendent Ryman, Nate Odell, our Nutrition Services, because they operate independently. And then Adam Stewart overseeing the bond funds, all of those folks really contribute a lot to this effort. So just a quick shout out. We are looking at the first year of the Biennium, which is kind of an uneasy time for us because like Mike shared, we don't know the exact level of funding. So we're planning for flexibility and we're also planning to be solvent and on target at the end of the two-year period. So that is what this document is based on. In the organization section, you'll see all of our new strategic plan components, which is part of our effort to increase transparency into what we're doing in our investments. And then in the finance section, you're going to see more of those line items, even though it's categorical and at a high level. We'll show a couple slides about how to go about reading that, but that's more technical, but it gives some history and also some projections moving forward in those areas. And then the final section of the document is informational. So that's a lot of data in there that's carried forward from our comprehensive annual, our annual comprehensive financial report that we give. But it's also again projected forward because this is supposed to be forward-looking and be a guide that we are using as we make decisions. So that's really the whole setup of the document. The executive summary is at the highest level, so that's your quick go-to budget at a glance information also. Yeah, or charting that, that we were in. I am happy to take any questions you might have about the document itself. Comments and feedback are always welcome, one-on-one offline as well. Happy to take that information and always make improvements whenever we can. That is the figure there. Figure three is known as an abacus, early mathematical device. Again, I'm pretty sure I saw one on the other shelf in my service. So the next couple slides are going to be focusing on kind of how to read the financial sections of our documents. So all of the school districts in Oregon are, we are basically told how to have our account structure set up in order for the state to have some level of accountability of our major fund types. And that's what this is about. So as we shared before, prior presentations, the general fund is really non-restricted as long as it's spent on school or anything allowable under Division 22. So that's our most flexible and one is our operating fund. It's also our largest. We have special revenue funds, which are restricted. They include federal programs. All of the S R funds, student investment account, high school success, they all require an extra level of application and accountability, whether it's at the state or federal and federal level. So we track those much more granularly to make sure that we can import on those expenditures and the activities under those funds. And we have two, we have 100 of them, just about. We use all of that full range of numbers in terms of special revenue funds. Our other major funds include debt service, which is gathering resources to pay back debt that we have. So the bulk of it is in principal and interest payments. Our capital projects fund is everything from the bond. We did have two major bond sales of our last authorization. So you'll see that declining over time if you get in and start looking at those charts. And our internal service fund is a fund that's been established with one-time monies and it will be earmarked in the future for spending on some one-time type expenses. For the expenditure side of the equation, we have two different ways, distinct ways that we can look at the data. The first is by object. Or wait, did you already do function? We've got to go back one. All right, so our functions, so all of them are broken out again. This is the same structure across the state. This isn't anything that we've engineered just for Hillsborough, but we need to be consistent in processing. What we call the 1,000 functions include classroom teachers and specialized educators. So those are more direct instructional roles. And then the 2,000s are all the support services. So when you're looking at that little pie chart, I don't know if we can read the numbers or not, but that is definitely the bulk of our general fund expenditures. I focused on general fund just for this purpose, but you can see that that's about 84% there of our expenditures are tied up in instruction and then all those things that we do to support them, like transportation, facilities, counseling, administration, all of that is tied up into support services. Then we have our community service. We have very little earmarked for that specifically in the general fund. We do have a lot of special revenue funds targeted towards that, so those federal programs and also some general fund, but again, it's mostly targeted. Well, this is targeted for the general fund, so if it's not targeted for that, we don't have a whole lot, focusing on instructional and support services. The 4,000s, again, we don't typically spend a lot in capital projects from the general fund. We focus on those other things, so you won't see it here, but in those other areas of the budget, you will see them. And then contingency and fund balance. So you can see that our contingency here is actually lumped in with fund balance. So that gives us 5.1% target, even though our fund balance standing alone is 4% by the end of the year. All right, so expenditures by object. This gets a little bit into the activities, so we can see how much is spent on salaries. Again, this is just focused on general fund, but you can see 80% of our budget, 80-plus percent of our budget is tied up in salaries and associated payroll costs. Those associated payroll costs include curves, insurance benefits, all of the other percentages payroll costs that would come along with having staff. Our 300s, our services, they include utilities and you can just see by this pie, that's a fairly small slice of the pie, but it's also a very important one that we manage closely. Our substitute services and any other contracts are funded through the 300s and they can be spread out across multiple funds, but for this analysis, this is just general fund. Supplies, again, you can see how small our budget is for supplies when we're talking about general operations. If we get grants specifically to buy special things, they can be to Eric Carlsen, Hope Post Schools Foundation. That would be all a lot of supplies as we're getting career kits or the things that those are specifically for.
Michelle?
Yes?
When you say supplies, does that include or exclude teachers' things?
Includes.
Oh, that does.
Classroom. And technology. So our general fund again is pretty limited when you compare it to the amount of services we're providing in staff, salaries, and associated payroll costs.
Has supplies and materials been the thing where takes white sack when we have to? Is that what we've done in the past?
Not very, not very often because such a big portion of our budget is in people. So 85%, so while we have reduced minimum, it's, you read the numbers that we, that we've had in your response. It doesn't come close to the reductions that we had before. So yes, we've done some, but it's not really running like this.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the 600 is includes liability insurances, debt service, and dues and fees. And then we have transfers. So you can see those pieces just get smaller and smaller. So that's the budget by object, just technical. And I feel like I'm starting to get long winded, so I'm going to go a little bit faster. But please stop me if you have any questions. For operational notes, and you'll find this and all of the at-a-glance information in the budget, so I won't spend a lot of time here. But you have our licensed staff targets. Holding to the concept that we're going to use temporary resources for temporary things and not use temporary resources for things that we want to sustain over a long period of time. We have our student investment account information we brought to you earlier this year with the integrated guidance. All of that information is available in detail on our website now and the Oregon Department of Education is reviewing it. And then we have a contingency plan for a student's school fund appropriation because again, we don't know exactly how much we're going to get next year. We're advocating for a certain level, but the governor and the coaches both shared their recommendations with the budget. Our outlook and assumptions for 2324, we're assuming that we're going to have full service level appropriation, so that's what Mike shared. Your document is going to be appropriated at the higher level, anticipating that we may be funded there. However, our staffing plan is currently set at one point that we're realistic and not sure of. But we wanted to have authorization to spend at a higher level if that actually occurs. We're assuming our current proposals for our collective bargaining agreements are the final total cost for 2324. We know what those are. We're fortunate that way. We don't anticipate any material legal settlements during the fiscal year and targeting that 4% general fund balance. We expect that we may see areas of the budget that might exceed costs at one level and be under another and we monitor and make adjustments throughout the years we need to. Just making a note of that. We're also assuming the economy will stabilize and grow. That's been the last many forecasts. We anticipate a slowdown or flattening. And the next short-term forecast is May 7th and we'll be watching that closely. It'll likely inform our final funding level. This is a lantern to go along with the highlight, but also pretty sure I saw one in my service. Again, what Superintendent Scott shared about our student enrollment, there's a trend there of decline. It's not ours alone, but it's something we have to monitor closely because the funding is set for Oregon as a state. So we need to make sure that we're monitoring that and doing all we can to get kids in school and keep them there. Our fund balances, status quo. We're anticipating the student investment account will continue to be fully funded. It wasn't at first. Whether it was high school success, but we're anticipating they will continue to be fully funded. The S R 3 plan, we have a few slides on that in here as well, and then contingency planning. You can go ahead. It's all coming. Student enrollment, sorry, my computer's going. Yeah, so this is a slate. Notice how the chalk is actually attached to it. The children from losing it. Right, switching tool. It was probably the free cursor to the yellow pad. That was the funnest part of this slide compared to all the rest, other than it's our intention to continue to match staffing levels from the moment. To make sure that we're not overstuffed and unsustainable as things change for us in HSD. You can go ahead.
Did we say at some point that there is either a group or persons who handle the data that are doing the projecting for the birth rates and all that stuff, so that we're tracking this?
Yeah, and we'll be bringing more information about enrollment, our performance for the year and then what our outlook is in like the June, mid-June. More to come up. Fund balance, you can see, I just didn't want anybody to be surprised by the rate of the fine and fund balance because the majority of that is our capital projects fund. But that's not where we normally live, so moving forward, we can see, we could expect it to be much, much less. Student account, student investment account. This is a slide that has been made available to you guys before. The asterisks indicate that the amount that's there is, does not include indirect rate charged to the grant or are cast through to student charter schools. So it's not, doesn't match exactly the amount that you would see on the Oregon Department of Education website and I just learned to make a note of what that is. Again, starting to talk about student investment account in aggregate, instead of, this was prior current service level. This is new investments, we're kind of shifting into, that was getting really challenging to track. Just it's all student investment account. You can see these areas of student health and safety make up the biggest part of this pie. The second being class size and case load reduction, increased instructional time and well-rounded learning. So I'll just say it, this was about two-thirds was bridging a budget gap in the last Biennium and we are just starting to move forward with that. But this is about a third of our student investment account is actual investments into our system. And now we're looking at it more realistically. And now we're looking at it more realistically. Okay, this is the slide that demonstrates at different levels of funding for state school fund, how much S R fund will be needed to backfill. At 9.9 billion, we need 10.2 of our 15 million of different leftovers to bridge that gap for the biennium. And again, that's represented in the budget document, you'll see that. That gives us $4.89 of investments. We've started a plan already that are up to $7.5 million. So we'll be looking at some contingency for that as we move forward. All right, again, thank you, Patrick, for your sharp eyes on this slide. You can see that it's same information, different format. When we're looking at our S R funds, the level of investment from the state versus our ability to use S R as investment or additional supports versus basic services that we offer students. Below are some one-time concepts for investment of the funds. If for some reason we have an opportunity to invest more than we've already earmarked. This slide again is a repeat for you guys. I apologize for that, but I also wanted you to just be familiar with the way we're planning to spend the S R funds of this. All right. That is known as a weighing scale, when you have to weigh decisions or plan for contingencies. Also known, justice fish.
Skills.
Yes, thank you. Fancy. Talking about the levels of appropriation that we need, Artie said it, we will be setting at the higher level. And then the difference between that and the management plan, which I touched on earlier, which is that we're actually swapping. All right, we can go again. All right, so our next steps. I can try and answer any questions that you might have there. Anticipate that the budget committee may have some discussion. Open the comments. And then move towards approval. Approval can be with changes, if there are, is something that everyone agrees on should be a change moving forward. We don't necessarily need to have a separate meeting for that. We could document that change and get consensus. Otherwise, we would need to schedule an additional meeting for budgeting.
So if I'm hearing correctly, we have until, we have a few more weeks to say, Michelle can explain X, Y, and Z.
Yes, and you can do that anytime. That can happen in or out of this process.
My only questions are about the S R funds because we keep talking about they're going away. And the projections, we can have them run up and down. So I can talk about that.
A big part of the S R funds is we've kind of been holding on to them, not knowing what session would do. And there have been some investments that we initially targeted with them that we were unable to expend funds, whether it was a supply chain issue or staffing issue, we didn't get the staff that we needed.
So must stop that.
Well, we didn't spend them recklessly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you had a question about, I think a while ago, we have said about our general fund balance. I'm trying to think, we were like really low for a couple of years. So I'm wondering the making like the 4.0%. How do we, how are we deciding to stay at that or like that's our goal instead of maybe trying to increase a little bit more, thinking about our enrollment and potential revenue that might not come in.
There has been discussion about it, Erica, in terms of increasing that fund balance and ways that we might strategically do that. I would probably recommend that we look at the second year of the biennium to do something like that when we're a little bit more solid on what our operation budget will look like. But that, I mean, it has come up over and over again as a topic. But so far, we've managed to maintain that 4% of the hidden.
I guess I would like to see us going towards having a little, there's always been a really scary low there. And we can consider it a plan for those potential years in the future.
Yeah, I'd love to see the 4.5 maybe, and step it up. So I mean, from a historical perspective, in some of the later budget cut times, boards have had that as a tool to sort of save jobs, class size, things like that. The penny fund balance that made was five when I was left in. And then I made the 4.5 and then four as a way to keep people employed. So while we have, you know, if the budget forecast is great in a few weeks and we're funded at a full level, I mean, I would love to maybe write maybe this on the first year of the biennium, maybe the second, I can also be an advocate of trying to step this back to 4.5. If only just to give future boards and later times that, you know, there are two bosses we really don't have.
I guess the, getting us back to 4.5, it, well, it does depend on what the final numbers come out and when she finally makes her final decisions. But she's also leaning toward helping other agencies, one of them. So I get on the pray that we get up to 10.2, but I'm worried that if we don't get there, then where does that leave us with that only four number right now? And then are we going to make it? There's, I have concerns there. Now that you don't.
Yeah. I do and I have, but we are conservative in a lot of our estimates, our funding expenses and revenue, which provides a layer of managerial contingency, I guess you could say, that kind of helps us navigate that. But it is, it is a lot. The state's got a lot more fund plus than we do, for sure.
Christine, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to just encourage that in that second year of the biennium, if we can move up to 5%, I would really want to encourage that. I know when I came in on the budget committee, I was kind of shocked that we were so low and then heard a little bit more of the history as to why, which it totally made sense and everything. But bumping up that fund balance is only going to help us. So I think it's a really prudent use of our time and resources should that situation occur where we can do it. So I just want to encourage that. Also, just want to say, Michelle and the folks who did the budget document, really good job. Good job, love seeing that strategic plan information in there. So really enjoyed reading that and everything, so.
Give me another question?
Comment, on the flip side of increasing your ending fund balance or your reserve, means you are cutting something down at a time when, at the projection of a $10, $9 cut. So I agree, I think the times of districts being able to have a huge reserve that protects tenures in the future is long gone. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to think that that would go back to a place that was before my years of service when there was that, that this state just isn't funded and mechanism that allows that anymore. And if you increase your reserve by a percent, then those list of items that we were discussing that are going, that could be potential cuts behind that.
One of the things that Kim's talking about is during, during her time on the board, we were constantly having to use attrition as an opportunity to, you know, just to make those reductions. And in a district our size, one of the reasons that we, no, don't get me wrong, we would love to grow that ending fund balance. We would love to have 5% or 6% or so, we would just love to grow it. But in a district our size, through a transition, we can adjust year to year without really going through a process or a layout. And that makes it a little easier for us to be nimble and to use the dollars that are available in a given year for the students that we create. So that's the balancing point that we always talk about and we're trying to get just right. So message received on growing the ending fund balance. And also number that even though we sit at 4% and hopefully higher as things come in, we do have the opportunity to make some, just some real-time decisions that would save us money in the following year.
Patrick?
I'd like to thank our budget committee members first of all for being here reviewing this. I got my start in public service in O A, served on the budget committee of a small, like many years ago, I lived in Tiger, the Tiger 12 Aquatic District, little district set to help the pools stay open. And I'd served on the budget committee, that much smaller numbers than we have here as a district, but still important work. And I also want to say thank you to our team, thank your team for us, please, because I know that last year's budget was recognized meritorious budget award. I think that's a level of national recognition of the fact that our, our team put a lot of effort in making these budgets. Working documents, but also communication documents for the community to understand what we're doing and why. That's important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. It's, it's on. Go ahead, sorry, add to it. No, I'm just going to say that this is, this budget, this presentation, these people, this is the reason why we go to conferences and people talk about the way you do this. So it's, isn't that enough to say thank you? If that's the only word I have right now. And we will.
But we will.
We will reject.
Recession board meeting. Switch over and ask the pack members to move to the table and begin our work session again. Thank you. Seen the photo, I haven't looked hard. What's that? Haven't seen that. I haven't seen a photograph of your office. Oh, sorry, I'll be for the budget meeting. I guess.
What? Yeah.
Probably proven in two minutes.
Yeah, I've been working with a woman. I think. Kristen is still there. That's the hope.
How long do I go while you're explaining?
Oh, nice, really interrupt, I need just one more minute. I think.
Recommending the budget meeting.
So part of the budget meeting meeting tonight was to see whether or not we would get approval from the committee at large or we just schedule another meeting. So we were running a little bit late. I apologize for that, but we're next to people heading as quickly as we can.
And what, did I follow?
Yeah.
People online. Do you have the entire role?
Yeah.
The role call is new with the marketing.
From a COVID to COVID thing.
Oh, okay.
I heard it.
That's how it works.
All right. I want you to do that online.
Unmute and say aye, so aye, and then mute again, and then unmute, say nay if you go nay.
All right, that's the move to approve the budget. I vote that we approve the budget as presented.
I'm saying.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Thomas that we approved the budget as presented as the budget committee. All in favor, please unmute for persons say aye.
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 Ready to want to post the approval of the budget? Budget is approved. Now the budget meeting is recessed.
Give the budget committee for your flexibility.
Thank you.
All right, we'll reconvene in our work session. And welcome our panel. Does somebody have an overview, like Francesca, do you like a preview or whatever?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Buenas noches, me compla- complase. Presentar a mi nuestros líderes asesores de padres latinos. Esta noche hablan de su trabajo, de sus ilusiones y de sus celebraciones. Si reenun, para mes con nuestras familia y la comunidad, para apoyar y abogar por sus estudiantes. Good evening, I'm pleased to introduce our Latino PAC advisory leaders. Tonight, they will be speaking about their work, their hopes, and their celebrations. They meet monthly with our families and community to support and advocate for their students.
Good evening, members of the union staff, my name is Olga Alcuna. I am your executive director of the programs. And it is an honor for me, I am truly honored to have this opportunity to introduce members of the pair of Latino, Latina, Latinx, and Latinx advisory committee. I am going to introduce them by name, and they have prepared a presentation. They have some slides that we will speak to, and they will also provide some direction and guidance as to how to proceed with the slides. So we have to my left, Elizabeth Garcia, Guadalupe Sanchez, Marisol Cariño, and Francisca Alonso. We are apparently the tech leaders. And we also have the class Antonio, who will be providing the interpretation services. Thank you so much, and we will begin with.
Buenas noches, como dicen esta doctora Olga Alcuna, mi nombre es Francisca Alonso y soy presidenta del comité de consultivo de padres. Y este pues tenemos como favor a la señora Marisol Cariño, Guadalupe, y Elizabeth. Y gracias por invitarnos.
Nice, Mari, and I'm Dr. Olga Alcuna, and I'm Francisca Alonso. And I'm the president of the local school district, and we have Marisol Cariño, Elizabeth Garcia, and Guadalupe Sanchez, and thank you for inviting us.
Como comité nuestro propósito es asesorar a los diferentes miembros del personal cuando nos lo solicitan.
As part of meeting, our purpose is to provide advice for the different members of the staff when they're requested.
Motivar a los padres a involucrarse en la educación de sus hijos.
Encourage parents to be involved in their students' education.
Y abogar por mayor y mejor oportunidades para estudiantes y familias.
And advocate for more and better opportunities for students and families.
Entre nuestros lados, el siguiente slide. Entre nuestros lados está el aumento en la participación de los padres.
Among our achievements is we have increased parent involvement.
Participación de tres de nosotros en las reuniones de liderazgo.
And suspension of three of us in leadership meetings.
Donde abogamos por mejoramiento de la comunicación de la escuela a casa.
Where we advocate for improving communication from school to bank.
Y contratación de más personal diversificado.
And hiring more diverse by the staff.
Logramos talleres de motivación.
We also manage to bring motivational workshops.
Y abogamos por talleres de tecnología, por ejemplo, las clases de computación para los padres.
And advocate for technology workshops such as computer classes for parents.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Siguiente slide, por favor.
Next slide, please.
Bueno, pues estamos emocionados de compartir con ustedes el crecimiento. Bueno, pues estamos emocionados de compartir con ustedes el crecimiento del número de PACs en las escuelas. En este ciclo escolar surgieron tres nuevos comités de padres.
We're excited to share with you the growing number of PACs in schools. Renewed parent committees were created this school year.
En Pointer, por ejemplo, hemos tenido éxito en nuestras reuniones de padres porque tenemos el apoyo del director, la subdirectora, y de la facilitadora de involucramiento.
At the honor, for example, we have been successful in our parent meetings because we have this forum with the principal, this is the principal, and the family outreach liaison.
Gracias a ellos se ha traído temas importantes de lo que las familias quieren saber.
And thanks to them, critical topics of what families want to know have been brought up.
Siguiente slide. Pues es del personal con el que colaboramos durante el año escolar.
This are the staff we collaborated with through the school year.
Este es el primer año en que se contratan a tres nuevos especialistas de atención comunitaria en las siguientes escuelas, which Hazel, Tobias, y Lennox.
This is the first year that three new military specialists have been hired at the following schools, which Hazel, Tobias, and Lennox.
Siguiente slide. En esta diapositiva, este pues podemos observar los, algunos de los servicios que han sido ofrecidos a las familias del distrito.
And on this slide, we can see the services that have been offered to families in the district.
Por mencionar algunas, podemos observar que mil ochenta y tres familias recibieron ayuda con referencias de comida.
And mention a few, we can observe that thousand eighty-three families received food and girls.
Y alrededor de cinco mil cuatrocientos ochenta y un familias han recibido apoyo de los trabajadores del NACES.
And around five thousand, five thousand four hundred eighty-one families have received support from the family outreach liaison.
Siguiente. En esta gráfica se puede mostrar el total de servicios que han sido proveidos por el equipo de involucramiento familiar hasta el día de hoy.
And this chart shows the total number of services provided by the family engagement team at each level on the map.
Podemos observar que siete mil quinientas sesenta familias recibieron apoyo.
We can notice that seven thousand five hundred sixty families received support.
Y ocho mil ochocientos noventa y uno, noventa y ocho ha sido el total de servicios que se han proporcionado a las familias.
And eight thousand eight hundred ninety-eight is the total number of services provided.
Esta es una gráfica comparativa. Se habla sobre.
This is a comparative chart that explains.
La participación de los padres a través de los años.
The parental involvement for the years.
Hemos visto que la participación ha aumentado principalmente a nivel primaria.
We have seen that participation has increased mainly at the elementary level.
Siguiente slide.
Next slide.
Tenemos socios comunitarios. Aquí podemos observar que tenemos apoyo de Oregón Bank. A ellos nos proporcionan despensas para algunas escuelas del distrito, y estas escuelas las reparten a las familias con necesidad de alimentos.
We can see that many community partners, for example, Oregón Bank, they provide a support for the families that are distributed to the families in the unit.
Otro ejemplo tenemos adelante mujeres que nos proporcionan un club para nuestras chicas, y es después de las clases. Este club se enfoca en poderar a cada una de nuestras clases y llegar al liderazgo.
We also have Adelante Mujeres, which is a partner that offers a club that provides empowerment and leadership opportunities to our students, to the girls' club.
Siguiente slide. De acuerdo al aumento de la participación de los padres, pues a nosotros como comité nos gustaría ver más fondos para el desarrollo profesional en los comités de las escuelas.
As part of involvement increases, we would like to see more funding for professional development on the side of committees at schools.
Pasemos con indicación a los directores a que sigan comunicando y colaborando con el comité de padres para que sigan haciendo el involucramiento familiar.
And we invite the principals to continue communicating and collaborating with the parent committees so they can continue engaging families.
Una disculpa porque estas son sugerencias que entonces nos solicitamos como comité.
I want to mention that these are some suggestions that we made as committee.
Otras sugerencias tenemos de, que nos gustaría ver más la participación del PAC del distrito en las reuniones con los directores.
We would like to see more participation from the district PAC meetings with principals.
También como líderes del distrito hemos participado y colaborado con el comité.
As district leaders, we have participated in collaborating with the committee.
Mejorar la comunicación del distrito con las escuelas.
Improve district communication with schools.
Contratar a personas de diferentes culturas que representen a los estudiantes.
And hire people from different cultures that represent students.
Siguiente. Preguntas.
My question. When you mentioned funding for more professional development, school parent advisory committees, what kind of professional development would be the most type?
Cuando hablan acerca del fondos para el desarrollo profesional para los comités, las escuelas, ¿qué tipo de fondos en específico?
Sí, específicamente nos estamos refiriendo a fondos económicos, ya que hemos tenido el apoyo de programa, por parte del programa esteligrante, que son fondos federales, federales, pero nos gustaría tener más fondos por parte de este, del distrito escolar.
We're talking specifically about economic resources because we have some funds from the migrant program. We would like to see, also, we would like to receive more funding from the district.
Pero para qué tipo de, qué tipo de desarrollo, desarrollo que. Para, debido a que como vimos en las gráficas que la participación de los padres o involucramiento de los padres está aumentando, hay muchos padres que se pierden la oportunidad de ir a talleres como de motivación, y este, debido a que no hay suficientes fondos, entonces por eso queremos principalmente para incluir el involucramiento familiar.
We're talking about the, since the participation, the parents' participation is increasing, sometimes they miss the opportunity to spend in workshops due to the lack of money. I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ya, pues nada.
Tenía dos preguntas. Una era conectada a esta pregunta del desarrollo, pero algo que estamos viendo mucho es este, en situaciones de, como dice, ayuda para para salud mental a los estudiantes, entonces pregunto si alguna capacitación o talleres que han hecho para los padres acerca de esto, o sería un área que también les gustaría, porque es algo que vemos mucho en el distrito, que nos están dando incidentes que pasa, encuentros donde si hay algo que han hablado.
According to questions, I would like to know any, are there any activities that have been done about support mental, mental health? Since we have seen incidents in the district.
Es un tema que siempre hemos estado pidiendo el apoyo de nuestra directora, y hemos tenido estas respuestas en nuestras escuelas, ahora sí en reuniones pequeñas, pero nos gustaría que ustedes como distrito nos apoyaran a hacerlo algo más, cómo le diré, más este completo a nivel distrito, porque es un tema realmente necesario, es un tema que nuestras familias, yo he estado en reuniones de mi escuela en el distrito, y piden este tipo de reuniones o de talleres para tener esa información, porque realmente estamos en una entafada en que sí se necesita.
We have always talked about this kind of support with our director, and we've been talking to schools about it, that we would like to be able to take this topic to a general district level. So, because this is something that we're feeling in.
Solo para, algo adicional, verdad, aparte de la salud mental también es importante seguridad, la seguridad en las escuelas con nuestros padres, entonces también ese tipo de talleres nos gustaría que se abrieran más para nuestros padres, porque de alguna manera estamos este informándolos, informándolos y educándolos.
And also, we would like to see more workshops about safety, because we would like to inform the parents about some tools and ways.
Por lo regalarlo también, este creo que definitivamente se necesita más aumento, verdad, en lo que es la salud mental, porque desafortunadamente están los niños este, sufriendo más ataques de bullying en la escuela, y no hay suficiente personal para que los niños que están haciendo, sufriendo eso, reciban ese apoyo. Entonces definitivamente se necesita más.
Yes, I would like to add that I would like to see an increase in the mental health support, since I see a lot of people suffering bullying, and I think it's not enough what maybe are doing right now.
Mark, I'd like to ask, maybe have Michelle maybe refresh us at some point in the near future on the amount that we share with all the PACs. I know this is probably our largest, longest, and most storied one, but it would be nice to know how much that we're currently sharing with them for their use, and then find out, well, that would tell us a lot, especially given the constraints that we're going to face.
I can work with Ora to do that. She handles the federal programming that extends to that. I do know that we offer supports without administrative support and access, like we do extend those things that aren't a direct cost, so I will agree.
The only reason why I'm asking is.
Me gustaría saber cuántos fondos están destinando para su uso, para poder tener una mejor idea de lo que estamos hablando. Eso lo voy a platicar con Ora para poder tener una mejor información.
Thank you so much. I remember many years ago, we had a dinner meeting that was a lot less formal, and that was my favorite collaborative meeting that we have had so far. I think we stopped doing that, because we argued this instead. But I'd suggest maybe in the future in the planning calendar, doing one more formal, and maybe one more like informal dinner. That seems a little bit more collaborative and less reporty, you know, so I also may have to see.
Muchas gracias. Recuerdo que en años pasados tuvimos algunas reuniones más generales, reuniones formales, y tal vez este año no tuvimos así, porque estamos realizando esta reunión, pero me gustaría en el futuro poder tener una reunión formal de este tipo, y tal vez una reunión un poco más formal, pues pueda tener un poco más.
That was my question.
Una pregunta, creo que en el año pasado, esta, el número dos sugerencia que decía de participación con los directores, creo que estaba bien preguntado antes si dependía de cada escuela en nivel de colaboración y qué se pasó con un director, pero no, era diferente la práctica en cada escuela, incluso estoy confirmando que puede ser la cuestión un poco su preferencia, porque todavía hay esta diferencia, y lo que quieren es una, algo que sea constante de apoyo a ese nivel de los directores con el PAC desde él.
Sí, definitivamente.
Last year, we, and the second topic that you mentioned, you mentioned the principal's participation, and it was dependent on the every school. So, I guess, I assume that the suggestion is still there because that is still a need, still, that's to happen.
Sí, este definitivamente, pues sí se necesita que más trabajo, hemos avanzado como lo muestran las gráficas, pero todavía hay muchos directores que todavía les falta el trabajo, este, reconocer que si los padres nos involucramos en la educación de nuestros hijos, pues hay más éxito, hay mejores resultados. Entonces, por eso sigue siendo aún todavía una de nuestras sugerencias.
Yes, there's still more work to do. There are improvements, as the graph shows, but there are some principles that still doesn't recognize that the parents involved, the students will be better.
Ah, un ejemplo hemos mirado de algunas escuelas en que los directores no están accediendo a la flexibilidad para hacer un PAC, un PAC de la escuela, entonces queremos que sean más flexibles, queremos que, como por ejemplo en el principio de, del ciclo escolar, cuando se reúnen los directores o los maestros, que nos inviten con los directores para decirles la importancia de que tomen en cuenta a los líderes, no, porque hay padres líderes en la escuela, pero a veces no dan la cara para mirarlos, entonces deben de mirarlos y escucharlos para que la, la escuela salga adelante.
Some principal, we have seen that some principals are not very open to give access to the creation of the PACs, and we would like to be invited at the beginning of the school year in future to talk about the importance of involving leaders in the community, and to mention that to the principal.
Y bueno, finalmente para concluir, verdad, este, en otras escuelas afortunadamente tenemos esa participación, verdad, y este, y realmente es un éxito tener este nuestras reuniones, porque vemos la colaboración y la participación de director, subdirector, y la abogadora de familia, no, entonces creo que yo, yo que eso tiene que ver mucho para la asistencia de nuestras reuniones, se involucran más nuestros padres.
And finally, we've seen other schools where we have the participation of the principal, the assistant principal, among the A's, and they noticed that their participation is important for the community and parents' involvement.
I think at one point we saw principals might have viewed the PAC as a competitor to the PTO or PTA, but it's not that way, right? Are we still, are we still seeing cases where principals view the PAC as for the PTO, PTO? Or the PTO or PTA? And what, so yeah, what can we do to help ensure that they're, they're not just a competitive organization?
Tal vez existan algunas situaciones donde los directores ven al PAC como una competencia para los asistentes de padres, y queremos saber por qué ustedes comentaron acerca de esto, si esto es.
Bueno, este, podemos este apreciar por nuestros miembros del comité, este, justamente a veces hay un poquito de choque, verdad, porque nuestra intención como comité de padres latinos es este involucrar a nuestros padres para que tengan una mejor guianza a nuestros estudiantes. Yeah, we, we see a lot of the quality between the PAC meetings and the PTO or PTA, but the finality of the PAC group is to create the involvement to the families in the education and the students. Estamos encontrando una manera óptima, por ejemplo, en la escuela secundaria, que son solo dos años, y que el comité, pues los padres pasan muy rápido. Entonces, algo que hemos, estamos este descubriendo es este involucrar a nuestros padres latinos para ayudar a la escuela, a que nuestros estudiantes caminen por el camino correcto. Si tienen que elegir clases para tomar el octavo, noveno grado, nosotros vamos a estar ahí, estar ahí para respaldarlos. Entonces, solamente es la colaboración que podemos tener con ellos, por ejemplo, solo en secundaria. For example, in the middle school, that is just for two years, we are observing that the, the.
the involvement, the parent involvement, it's, it's very limited, so we really want to increase the parent involvement in that level, in the secondary level and middle school level, in order to provide better communication with the school for the students. For example, if there are students in ninth or eighth or ninth grade, just give it orientation about the classes and the courses that they have.
Lo único que queremos es que no haya más desertión de nuestros estudiantes.
The only thing that we don't want is the decreasing, decreasing the enrollment of the students.
Este, yo pienso que sí sería una buena forma que el distrito podría ayudar manteniendo una comunicación con los directores y explicar que el PAC no es para recaudación de fondos, no es para trabajar con nada que es para, para eso, verdad. El PAC es más para trabajar con las familias que tienen una barrera con el idioma y que necesitan apoyo a cómo manejar el sistema. Entonces muchos directores no entienden la diferencia entre.
We would like to support, we would like the district to support us and talk with the principals because in order to let them know that the PAC is not an organization to to make a funding advance, the PAC is for the families. It's for the families and we are serving the families in order to diminish the barrier of the language. And they, they need to know about the system, so we are serving the families to provide that information for, for, for the, for the education of the students.
Yeah, I think one other thing that I was thinking about is how unless you're a PAC parent or in the PAC, you understand what's happening, but if you're not, if you're a parent that isn't involved in there, how would you know what they do and what they're about? Is there a way that we're I guess not only just communicating, but advance, helping them advance their mission district-wide, and it's something that we could help communicate to the board or communication with the community.
I, I have been to some meetings because I was a student representative in Latinx PAC and one thing like I, when I've been there, I notice, you know, I see presentations on like super security and high school requirements and like, you know, without the Spanish English translation and without the PAC there wouldn't be like families knowing what's going around, you know, all the management through like high school while their kids are there. So, you know, we, we take the, that's what the PAC is for, taking down you know, the language barriers and like knowing and familiarizing themselves with the school system and you know, how we can, how parents can have the connection and support of all their children. So.
Yeah. Estamos este crear una, una mejor conexión, una mejor comunicación para hacerles saber a la diferencia de las condiciones que tenemos entre, por ejemplo, el idioma del PTA y el PAC. Y también este hacerles saber que nosotros podemos ayudar a disminuir la barrera de lenguaje y hacer como una conexión con los padres y hacer esa transición de la, de la escuela primaria, secundaria a la preparatoria para que conozcan el sistema en modo.
I was also thinking, as I'm listening to you Beth and our guests, that somehow we have to give the word to the PTOs that the PACs are there to get them to reach out as well. I, I think that would be hope, so for example, if the PTO is, they should be communicating with all of, all three of the PACs across the district whenever they do something, right? Because then those PACs could then identify with the families at specific schools. And I think that would help so that we don't have this conflict between PTO and, and the PAC. But like she said, the PAC is for families and, and the families, and that's more brutal to the other part. Just thank.
Creo que sí deberíamos hacer llegar esa comunicación acerca de la diferencia de los grupos escolares entre PTO y PAC porque como ustedes lo dimensionaron, el PAC es para las familias. Entonces tenemos que buscar una forma de cómo hay la comunicación, si es una comunicación actual con los grupos de PTO ellos también nos tuvieran ayudar acerca de compartir información de los grupos de PAC para crear esa, esa comunicación pues entre, entre los grupos de PAC e identificar a las familias que puedan ser parte del grupo de PAC.
I think we worked on this a lot. It feels like this is one of the things that the pandemic has also set back. Right, we worked on that. The PAC is not here to keep the resource with the PTO for a while. It sounds like it's just another one of the things that got set back by the pandemic, so. Glad you know about it again.
Creo que trabajamos mucho, por ejemplo, durante la pandemia trabajamos mucho acerca de el trabajo que están haciendo los grupos, en especial el grupo de PAC.
I want to say thank you very much for this presentation. Even though we try, as board members, we can't be everywhere, talk to all people, and so the work you do to bring forward suggestions and practical ways we can assist is very valuable to us. So thank you very much.
Gracias, gracias por traernos esta presentación y gracias que hoy todas las sugerencias que nos han traído aquí. Su trabajo es muy valorado para nosotros. Saludos a mis hermanos.
And I think our cena en octubre, ¿en noviembre posible?
Yeah, there are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is all of our work session agenda. Oh, by the way. It is, all right, we go during the work session and we can be downstairs for our regular. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I will call our regular session meeting to order. We'll begin today as we always do with our flags, Luke. The flag is in the back of the room over there. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atollati indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County in the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tualatin Kalapuya, Kathlamet, Clacamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous Native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. First up, our proclamations, and Monique, I think you have the first one.
Looks like that's on. Good evening, everyone. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, family, and healthcare providers on behalf of students' health. We know that students today face complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And we appreciate the role that school nurses play in the lives of students. We recognize that school nurses have, have served a critical role in improving student health and ensuring students' academic success for more than one hundred years. We understand that school nurses are the link between health and learning, are in a position to make a difference, a positive difference for students every day. We celebrate the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. The Hillsborough School District offers gratitude to school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. The Board of Education of Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May sixth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, to be School Nurses Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of school nurses to the development of prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation, I think, is she in, right? Who's joining us online?
Thank you. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders lived and worked in Oregon since its early days, contributing to the state's rich history, economy, and culture. The Hillsborough School District knows that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have helped advance our community's prosperity through their contributions to all fields of education, business, the arts, economic development, science, and technology, among others. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders history is marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice, prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. The Hillsborough School District understands that the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are here to be honored as a central part of our state's story and shared across all Oregon communities. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that the month of May is nationally recognized as a time to celebrate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our society and collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Asian Pacific Americans to the development of prosperity of our community.
Thank you.
We have one more, and I'm Director Allen. I don't get a.
Oh, at least you have our next one, yeah. You already like, you're already heading up there, I figured you had it, all right.
It's fine. It's just the last time I get to do this. You know, of eight times. Okay, ah, so hi, everybody. Good evening. The Hillsborough School District celebrates teachers who keep American democracy alive by molding future community members through guidance and education. The Hillsborough School District honors teachers who are constantly learning so they can adapt to the ever-changing needs of a diverse population in order to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams that reach beyond the limits of their present circumstances. The Hillsborough School District thanks teachers who contribute to the growth of our city, state, and nation by providing high-quality, equitable education to all students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. The Hillsborough School District salutes teachers and their work to inspire students to discover endless possibilities for success. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May eighth to the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of teachers to the development of prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Allen.
It's your last one, thank you.
This is our section on proclamations, and we, we don't have anything else on the agenda, but I'll just ad hoc add. I would like to proclaim that the Board of Directors is extremely grateful to Rose for all of the extra hours and dedication that she has put in. For our first action item of the evening, I, we've spent a lot of hours together with just the board and Rose and Audrey, and we absolutely could not have done it without her. Would anybody like to move to approve the agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Would anybody like, oh, audience time is next. Rose, do we have, Rose or Beth, do we have anybody who would like to speak this evening? Yeah, there was a, there was something added late this afternoon to your board packet. You may have had a chance to see it, but please revisit your board packet or your board area for an intent-to-speak written comment that was, that didn't need to be spread out a lot, just has to be shared with the board, so. Would anybody like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? The consent agenda is approved. All right. I think we should move this to the end, maybe just move this one. I believe probably most of the people are here tonight for the, our first action item, so we will begin with that. The, the Board of Directors has spent months working on this, that there's no way to sort of express the gratitude I have for all my colleagues for the extra hours and time that they put in over these last three months. Really came to a head this past month especially, and I don't think we will ever be able to describe, I guess, because that happens in executive session, the amount of extra work we had to do to get here. But I would just like the community to know that this is not a decision that was made lightly. The consultants brought us an excellent field of candidates. We had two different cup points where we had conversations with them. We toured buildings, we had multiple hour meetings. I want to characterize that this is a decision that the board really spent a lot of time getting to where we are today. So would anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I move that the Board of Directors approve the hiring of Travis Ryman as the Superintendent of Hillsborough School District, One J.
It's been moved by Director Allen and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the hiring of Travis Ryman as the Superintendent of Hillsborough School District, One J. Is there any further comments? Any further discussion?
I just, I, I do want to take the time to, Mark alluded to it, this was, this was not easy. I think that it has to do with the man in the chair. But we're gonna be okay.
Any other comments?
As Mark said, the board conducted a national search and invested considerable time and money into doing that because we wanted the best for Hillsborough students. I'm bound by confidentiality not to reveal identities of the applicants who didn't get selected as finalists, but suffice it to say there were dozens from all corners of the nation here in our state of Oregon. There was a diversity of background, of experience, of size, of district. And we, as a board, were determined to conduct this search in real earnest, starting with a blank slate and the characteristics and qualities that the community said they wanted in a leader here at Hillsborough. I expected it to be an excruciatingly difficult choice when I saw the caliber of applicants in our first review, and it was because the community cares so much and provides so much good feedback on all of the candidates, the finalists. But over time, it became clear, reviewing the materials, the community feedback, talking to the candidates, it became clear what the choice was. Every person I talked to, every metric we set, length of leadership, depth and breadth of service, the type of characteristics our parents and our staff felt Hillsborough uniquely needed. It's not just that Travis is the best qualified among the applicants, it's that for this role, for this place, for this time, I don't know if it would be possible to find a person more qualified. The fit is very unique. All of us here on this board volunteer our time and our energy because we are desperate to see the children of Hillsborough. All of us here on this board volunteer our time and our energy because we are desperate to see the children of Hillsborough do well, to see them thrive, to see them reach their dreams. And now to Travis, we put those hopes on you. And we trust you to make them real. And I'm comfortable by the knowledge that the dedicated team in place who you've worked with all these years stand ready to help you shoulder that weight of responsibility. So, for such a time as this, we're very, very happy to have found the right person, and we all stand behind you as well.
Any other comments?
Uh, so, I previously refused to acknowledge that Mike was retiring, and I'll acknowledge now that you're gonna go away. Um, only because I'm, I'm so excited, um, uh, for what comes next. Um, and, and, uh, I was trying to think of the best way to encapsulate the reason why, um, I am happy with where we landed after, I can't say better than what Patrick said about where we started and, and the journey that we got here, but I was, I was trying to think about like, what can I say about Travis? Uh, and it turns out a lot, um, but what I'm gonna say is, I remember, I think it was like ten years ago, maybe a little bit more, when, um, number of positions ago, Travis was the, uh, the secretary to the, what used to be the Citizens Curriculum Advisory Committee. Um, and I was appointed to that committee, um, and then by a kerfuffle of events ended up being chair of the committee. Personally, we were actually elected, couldn't be on the committee anymore, and I was there, so that was fun. And, uh, Travis and I were talking, um, because back in the olden days in this time, um, you had to be specifically named and appointed by a board member, um, to your specific position on that committee, and we were like, gosh, that seems not quite accessible to everyone in the community. That's weird. Somebody ought to do something. And Travis was like, well, let's do something. And so then we did, and we changed it, and now everyone can apply and, and has equal opportunity to be on that committee. Um, and that's why I think that Travis is going to be such a stellar superintendent. I mean, obviously for many reasons, but, um, one of the things I admire most about you, Travis, is that you see a system and you see the barriers, and then you try to figure out how to break those down for people. So, um, I appreciate that about you very much.
Any other comments?
Um, yeah, I also just wanted to add, um, I really appreciated hearing from everyone in the community. We've had, we've had a lot of input and feedback from all levels of our community, especially our staff, our families, parents, and our community partners. And just that really, for me personally, was one of the biggest, um, uh, weights that I was looking for is, um, that continuing of leadership and those relationships are really important. And, uh, I just wanted to say that we are interesting, uh, we're really sad, Mike, that you're leaving, but I think as Lisa said, there's also something exciting with change, and change is hard even when it's good. Um, so, this is gonna be a new, a new time for our district. But I'm very hopeful because we have such strong leadership from our unions, from our cabinet, from staff, our parents. Everybody's really strong in our district, and so that gives me a lot of confidence that Travis is gonna do a fantastic job moving forward. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Uh, I'll just add, uh, second what Erica said, I want to thank staff, uh, administrators, community members who all took time out of their busy week to meet with our finalists last week, or last two weeks ago, um, and submit seventeen or so pages of comments uh, on each candidate, so, um, which I can assure you that each one of the board members read probably multiple times as, during our discussions, we were citing different things. Um, so, uh, thank you so much for all that, and yes, we know we are not replacing Mike. It's impossible to do. Uh, but I'm so excited to begin, uh, the next chapter of HSD's journey with Travis as our superintendent. Sheehan, you have your hand-ups or something you want to add?
There is, sorry. I could not figure out how to raise my hand fast enough. Um, just wanted to echo the, the comment that my colleagues have made. Um, this was an extremely, um, challenging yet rewarding process to go through, and I appreciate the collaborative nature that we approached this way. And Travis, you are, um, you are just the right person to, to lead us into this next phase for HSD, and, um, Mike is leading us in a really good spot, and I hope that, um, you know, you, we will be able to stand on his shoulders, um, and then he takes us to the next level, and, and you are just the person to do that. So, congratulations. I'm so sorry I can't be there in person. I have a sleeping infant on my lap right now. Um, but just congratulations. We're so, so excited and look forward to working with you.
We have been fortunate enough as a board to spend a lot of time with that sleeping infant over the past few weeks too, so that's been pretty great. Any other comments? Alright, the motion on the table has stated the Board of Directors approve the hiring of Travis Ryman as superintendent of the Hillsborough School District, One J. Rose, can you please call the roll?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Opposed.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Travis. Welcome aboard.
Can you say thank you?
Sure.
I, um, I'm really moved by the things that you all just said, so thank you. I got a little caught off guard by the comments that you just made, so I really appreciate that, and I do, uh, there are a lot of people in the room who've helped me be the person that I am and the educational leader that I am, and I just want to say thank you to all of you also. We have an incredible board. We have an incredible community. We have incredible students, and I think that the work we do ahead will be uh, a way for us to honor what Mike has done before us, and so I really look forward to that. Um, it was an incredible honor to learn that you all had seen me as a person with the will and the skill to lead in the superintendent role, and, um, I just want to thank you for that. I, I did have a view to the process that you all went through, and it was incredible and deep, and, um, for me to have been chosen by you all is a great honor for me personally, and I can't wait to do this work with the team that we have, the board that we have, and the community that we have, so thank you very much.
Is there another motion you would like to make?
Sure. I move that the Board of Directors ratify the superintendent's contract. Second.
It's been moved by Director Allen and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors ratify the superintendent's contract. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say the contract, thank you to our board chair for getting the contract in shape. Um, I'd like to say briefly, just for those who may watch this meeting later online, um, most of the contract's very standard. It includes the salary we intend to pay our, our new superintendent, and I think no one gets into education, um, for the salary. All of our classified employees, we wish we tried desperately to pay more than we can, because they do such amazing work, all of our teachers, the amount of professional training they go through. Everyone involved in education should be, in a judged world, compensate and hire. And to understand what a value we get on senior leaders, I just think it's worth noting that we in the Hillsborough School District have about as many employees as Portland General Electric that we all pay our electric bills to. And their budget is larger, of course, but not by orders of magnitude, really. So you have a five hundred million budget when you include everything. Um, and the CEO of Portland General Electric, with all the equity options, is going to make about four million dollars this year. And here in Hillsborough School District, we're, uh, approving a salary for our chief executive that's significantly lower. So I want to say, honor, take this opportunity to honor all of, um, our employees who do such amazing work. And, uh, we compensate them the best that we can and in line with standard and state and national averages, but um, I just want to recognize that no one is in this for compensation, right, for the students.
Any other comments? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Opposed.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, I believe that concludes that portion of the business. Welcome aboard, Travis. Alright, uh, our next agenda item is reports and discussions. I think Travis still in his current role is gonna come up, and I think Becky, are you joining him? I think we are. We are, this is, curriculum adoptions are always one of the cool things we love hearing about.
Thank you. So tonight we have Becky to kick us off with the presentations, and we also, I wanted to introduce Shira Long Strand, who I think you know because she serves on the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, but also on the Educational Equity Advisory Committee, so Shira, thank you for your time and commitment in the committees that you serve on. And Shira will be here representing the conversations that were had at the CCAC meeting prior to bringing these presentations to you. So without further ado, Becky Kinsman.
I have a, oh, gosh. Okay, I have a few guests with me, uh, here today, um, to go through our world language materials adoption proposal, as well as our, um, middle school health, um, curriculum adoption proposal. We're gonna start out with the world language materials adoption, um, and I want to take in a little journey here because this process started in the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. And the reason why I remember that very clearly is I was pregnant, and I now have an four and a half year old, so that gives me an idea of how long this process has taken. Um, so, the reason being is that, um, we started this process, then the Oregon Department of Education, uh, pushed out their, uh, process for approving, um, the state list of materials. And then, of course, we had a little, um, interruption with a global pandemic that made it where piloting materials was not the best choice. And then, last school year, we began the piloting process, and our teachers requested to do a second round of piloting because they weren't fully satisfied with the options they piloted the first time. So, with all that said, a lot of, um, a lot of attention and scrutiny went into this materials, um, pilot and approval process that we're bringing with you. And to just give you a short, um, kind of history of where we've been and what we're recommending, um, I have invited Nicole Mito-Ahern, who is our K-12, uh, multilingual program TOSA, to take you through that.
Hi, um, so our world language adoption, like Becky had said, has been, um, a long time coming, and we're really excited to move forward. There we go. So, um, in fall, two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-two, we piloted three companies. And those three companies were Vista, Wayside, and Cengage, and, um, we piloted Spanish and French at all four high schools. And then after the two thousand and twenty, um, school year, teachers decided that they wanted to move forward with just Wayside and Vista as the two pilots, um, that met the needs for their students. So moving forward this year, we piloted, um, during the fall, and during that pilot, if anyone, teachers wanted to continue with another program, we allowed them to do a virtual or digital pilot, and they could get on there, look at the materials, and have students also use the materials online. So based on that, uh, separate pilot and continuing of the pilot, we found that a majority of our teachers really loved what Wayside brought to their students, their classrooms, and already fitting into how they teach, that they can add it and make it really beef up and supplement, um, the learning that is going on in their classroom. So nine out of our eleven teachers who conducted the pilot recommend Wayside for adoption. So for, that was not formatted this way, so, um, for our adoption plan for all middle schools, we are adopting from Wayside, and it's a one A and one B. Um, they will start in seventh grade for world language, and then in eighth grade, they will finish up, so that when they move into high school, they will be able to be in Spanish too. In all of our high schools, we are adopting, um, Spanish one through four for, uh, Wayside, also a Lit and Lang program, and French one, two, and three. For Chinese, which we are also adopting this year, Wayside does not have a program, so we will be going through Vista for that. Our professional development plan is working directly with Wayside, and they will conduct online training for our teachers as long as we um, are using their curriculum, and there will also be times for, um, office hours, as was my support for the schools and the teachers, um, with implementation. So some of the feedback that we got, oh, sorry, never mind.
Hi, everybody, sorry, probably cold, so, mask enough for your protection. So, um, from C, from C P A P, we were all really excited about this program. Um, there was talk about, um, you know, how all colleges require foreign language, and what it can mean for business, not just if, you know, kids don't want to go to college, it still helps them with everyday life and getting jobs and that stuff. So, the parents have pretty much gone home. We just had two major questions. Um, why didn't Wayside outscore the other curriculums piloted? And, okay, and we were told, you know, it was more user-friendly, the spoken sequence of the curriculum, and the real-world practice, not the pageant for the student. And then the other question was, is there potential to add, uh, languages down the road, and they said yes, but there's many factors that go into offering medicinal language. So, you have to have teachers that can, um, speak the language, obviously. Um, the students have to be interested in it. There needs to be partnerships, so it is like a whole process, but there's still the availability or the option to do, that was what we wanted to hear. So we voted seven yes. I am one abstain.
Okay, and I'm gonna move into health next. So we've been, um, approaching our health adoption, uh, process by level. And so last spring, we came to you with a proposal for, um, our K-six materials adoption for health, which we went with, um, The Great Body Shop, which is currently being implemented and, um, being supported throughout our buildings right now at the elementary level. And so I have invited Erin Hansen, who, um, last year was doing that as a special project. She was a counselor at one of our elementary schools, and we were fortunate enough to hire Erin this year as our K-12 health TOSA. And so she has been helping to shepherd this process with our middle schools, and will be back in just one month's time to talk with you about high school. So I'm gonna kick it over to Erin.
Okay. Alright, so, um, we, for our middle school health adoption, we piloted four different, um, curricula. And these are the two that we're gonna talk specifically about today, but the pilot in general, we, uh, we have four middle schools in our district, so we piloted three of them. Um, four of our teachers, um, were gracious enough to do the extra work to do the pilot. It is a lot of work. Um, and it actually, more than eight hundred and sixty-eight students, um, participated in the pilot. The, um, prior to piloting, we viewed each curriculum using the O D E accreditation question, so that graph up there shows you um, that more than seventy-five percent, um, of the questions on those forums either had an exceed or adheres, um, based on those two curriculum. So we were pretty pleased with that. Um, this is, so I gave, when I shared all of the data with, um, the teachers, um, they had an opportunity to vote, and they collectively hundred percent said that they would take Good Heart World Talks as their primary, um, comprehensive curriculum. Um, it is a very robust curriculum. It has excellent content. Uh, they've made it very adaptable, particularly, um, for Google Classroom um, and being upload, being able to upload things to Google Drive, which is, um, really helpful for our teachers. Um, there, one of, some of the comments with the teachers, they were a little concerned that there was, it was pretty reading-heavy. Um, but there are some workarounds with that, and, you know, thankfully I have the job that I have, so I can help the teachers, um, make it more adaptable and accessible to students. Um, but the content is really what we were concerned about, and we're really excited about what it has to offer. Um, it does require some professional development, but not an extreme. It does require some professional development, but not an extreme amount, which also, which is pretty excited about. Project School Wellness was the other one that we were looking at as a supplemental material. So that just means it's not going to be our primary curriculum. We'll use pieces of it. It kind of filled in some gaps that Good Heart Wilcox was missing. It does, it provides some activities that the teachers are really excited about. So that one didn't have 100%. I think it was, there was just one teacher that was like, didn't think they were necessarily use it, but most of them said that they would, they would really like that curriculum. So our, my, like, our collective recommendation to the school board is these two curriculum. So we would like to. We would like to have the Good Heart Wilcox for a seven year subscription and that includes a digital subscription for all seventh and eighth graders. And we're going to get a limited number of actual physical textbooks. You don't need a textbook for every single student because they have the digital access. And then. Project School Wellness is just a one-time purchase for the entire seven years, but they do get updates with that. And then professional development, we'll do some professional development just towards the end of this school year so they get familiar with the curriculum. So they have a little time to kind of percolate at the end of the year. And then we're going to do some, have some work sessions during the summer to create a spoken sequence and make the curriculum as accessible as possible so they can dive right in at the beginning of the year. And I think. So for this one, I want to say that. I'm going to start with the long passage is the phrase for the pilot and the process because. Becky and everybody on the team made it really easy and clear and like really held our hand and popped us through the whole process. They allowed multiple times for us to go and physically check the material that was being offered. They offered us multiple times to go into the schools and seeing them being taught. We noticed. The same things the teachers did, like one of the comments from one of the parents who got to go see how smart was. He's, his comment was, it required the teacher to go above and beyond to make the material work. So being a part of that process was really eye opening and amazing and just wanted to be proud of what you could do. And thank you so much for bringing us in on that whole thing. And so then when it came down to it, we just had one question. Why did they feel Good Heart Wilcox outscore the other curriculum? And, you know, they came back with all the charts and the stats and information and the feedback and you were there. So is the breadth of content more ready to use resources for direct use in the classroom? This one got everybody's vote. It was 12 to nothing. So thank you so much.
So both of these instructional materials adoption proposals will go into 30 day review to be voted on in the next meeting. And we are open to any questions you may have now or choose to follow up with us at a later time.
Um, given some of the sensitivity in the community about health curriculum, I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do? I, I, I remember us going through all this and I did a domino's work of stuff to bring this, to, to bring this back. We trust you. And that's. This is a result of that trust. My question is, how can we? Push the envelope just a little bit to help other parents who may not be as. To help the community as a whole to be, who are a little bit more sensitive about these types of curriculum. Can we show it to them? Can we do something to let them see what it is so that we don't have people off the wall saying it does this and does that? And that's not true because you all haven't told the story of what the curriculum is. Does that, does this make sense?
Yes, it does. And Travis is really excited to answer this question.
Travis.
Using like a pronoun.
So I just, I'll just say something I've made clear to us. There's a difference between the comprehensive sexual education and health. So a lot of people have issues with the CSE and not necessarily the health, especially on, in our committee. That's where the line was drawn. And the people who did have reservations about CSE still really like this curriculum. But I know the current way that you can do it is right before, I think it's like a week or two before the school introduces the curriculum, the health week. They notify every single parent. They have it at the, at their office, the principal office. You can go in before or after school, review the, I mean, this is something I've physically did this year as a parent. So that's just why I'm commenting on it. So I feel like you guys did a great job at notifying us. And so I would just encourage parents to, you know, go and talk to somebody because the, the materials are readily available. They're ready to talk to you and it's the way you have any of your worries. So that was my statement. Thank you.
I can't do better than that, especially from someone who's engaged in the process as a parent. But I can say that, like Shira said, there's a distinction between the comprehensive sexuality education, this health curriculum. This is kind of everything else. Drugs, smoking, eat healthy, get exercise. That's what we're talking about right now. And so with copyright, we can't publish the textbooks online like we wish we could to be ultra transparent, but we would encourage parents to seek out the teacher and understand what is in the health curriculum. If they wanted to know more information, they could do that in any curriculum area with us. And so that would be just a request directly to the teacher or even to the school's principal to access the materials that would be for that grade level. We do also have content lists of all the standards that are delivered by grade level by content. And so if I were a parent concerned about what the standards are regarding eat healthy, don't do drugs, don't smoke and get exercise, I could access the standards online and then follow up with the teacher about what would, how do you teach those topics? If those were topics that I was concerned about, what the content was.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question about the seven year subscription and you mentioned that there were going to be updates. How often are those updates?
We, we are a bit beholden to the publishing company with how often they do updates. But what we have found just in the last two to three years is that with definitely the push for resources to go more online for virtual learning and students engaging with them through Google Classroom and stuff is that companies are making much more frequent real time updates. The Good Heart Wilcox is more of a traditional large publishing, publishing company. So we are likely to see fewer kind of large updates to that as we go. Project School Wellness is a very kind of small grassroots company that's created this curriculum. It was originated by a middle school and high school health teacher. And so that is much more responsive to teacher input and feedback. So while we didn't feel like it had the same level of comprehensive or credibility that maybe one of the larger publishing companies are, that's why we're recommending Good Heart Wilcox as our core adoption and the Project School Wellness is more of a supplemental to bring things in and be able to be responsive to teacher needs with that.
I think that one of the things that was just thinking about how with changes in research and technology, there's new things that come up and so kind of signing up for a curriculum in this particular area, same with like technology, it could be outdated in a certain amount of time. So wondering how frequently we would be updating that materials.
Yeah, that's, that in particular has come up many times in our high school process. And what we have found in those cases, the, what the example that I always use is like tobacco use. For example, if you look at our curriculum prior to this that we adopted with like in the mid, like 2000s or something like that, there's no mention of vaping because it didn't exist, right? And so that is where we as educators, look at the standards and look at where are the gaps in our curriculum and addressing those standards and we bring in supplemental resources. We don't necessarily have to come to the school board for a supplemental review and approval process, but that is an internal process that we do in HSD that has a committee of people who have to evaluate and score the supplemental resources. And then that's given to our Office of School Performance to review and then make sure that it's approved before it gets used in classrooms.
So one more question. So with regard to professional development, I heard that. Is this company also going to provide the professional or was that with the person?
Both. So yeah, so the health one, Good Heart Wilcox, they provide, will provide professional development that, and then also the world language one, Wayside will provide professional development to our teachers as well. So that's generally kind of like the big, like first time show one that happens where you learn all the ins and outs of the curriculums. And then that's where people like Nicole and Erin come in alongside the teacher throughout the school year when they actually start using the material, that now they know what it is and they help with the more, you know, application in the classroom in real time.
So they have a local person here to help and then they're going to have the resource from the actual company and they'll be able to ask that, access that online and the teachers are okay with that.
Yes.
All of the training I'm speaking for world language will be online and they have been very responsive to anything we need. So if we needed the pilot expanded or we needed a training for just this one teacher, they've been really responsive to make sure that we get what we need. And as training is moving more digital, at least with the programs that I work with, the companies are making more of a commitment so that if new teachers move in, they will also get the training.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So it's on first reading, so we might see this again in our, our packet for approval next month.
That's right. And please forward any questions that you get or that you have our way and our team can answer those. And again, shout out to our teachers for their rigorous process, getting us to this point in this recommendation and then to the CCAC for spending time giving their input and having a conversation about this. Thank you.
Thank you. It would seem that the district is going to need a new point person on the CCAC.
Shira's not going anywhere, nor is Mike Smith.
That's not what I meant. All right. Our next agenda item is to discuss makeup snow day report. Oh, he's still here.
Still here. Wow, yeah. So after spring break, we start looking back to take a look at how many inclement weather days that we've had. This particular year, we had two days that were lost due to inclement weather and as well as a late start. Do know that when we take a look back and we're making a decision whether we're recommending making up a day or not, we look at a couple of different things. The first thing is, are we within our instructional hour requirement? And we're, with two days lost, we're well within our instructional hours. So that is not a problem at all. The other thing we look at is if we were to extend the school year, what would that mean for us? And what that could mean is that if you start pushing, if the extension of the school year starts pushing into the next week, we've got families that already have plans for that time. And we've also got summer programming that's already started in the district and in the community. So we are not recommending that we make up the snow days. This does not require any action because it doesn't require a change of the calendar. So I just wanted to get this on the record and say this publicly and make sure that our community knows that we would not be making up these days.
Everybody's sad about that.
Any questions? All right. Next up is the financial report, Michelle. There you go.
Chair Watson, I don't have anything to add. I would just draw a note to our example of supporting our principals as instructional leaders. We have example 67 and that's been one a month for many months now. But we are looking at project management standards and training for our staff as we move away from our bond management program and to kind of standardizing our practices moving forward. So that's something that we're super proud of doing and we'll be rolling out over the summer. And I'm happy to answer any questions I can for you guys tonight.
Does anyone have any questions on the financial report from Michelle? Of course you can email them anytime as well.
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Beth's already got the microphone. All right. We start our action, our new action portion and tonight we approve the strategic plan.
Yes. So you have had access to our strategic plan over the last several weeks, both a four-page version and the full 26-page version. Many thanks to Monique for her deft editing skills. She found a couple of typos for me and actually Gina McLean found one more for me tonight. I welcome any others that you may find. We, we definitely want a perfect document. One thing I would ask the board for your opinion on is because this plan won't officially take effect until July 1st, I would love to know your feelings on how we kind of notate the superintendent and the board members. Should that be the current superintendent and board members as of July 1st? Even though, you know, technically it was a different board that kind of made the approval. So you just, just let me know how you'd like that to be handled. So.
Digital strike through.
It'd be weird if those of us who are fading into the ether, like remaining there for, you know, it's going to, it's, it's just like 70 people. Yeah.
You want to live on in the strategic plan.
Space on the cover and Becky would love that. I think we did something similar.
I was going to say, I think we did something similar with the bond where we gave a special thanks to outgoing board members and superintendent. Is that something that we can do?
I think that's a great idea and I think we can easily do that.
Recommend that we would acknowledge our incoming leadership, acknowledge the outgoing leadership of which. The effort with the whole program was huge. So yes, I, if, if possible, I'd like to see both of them recognized.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have an input on Beth's question? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. This was a labor of love. So I moved that the Board of Directors approved the 2327 strategic plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez. That the Board of Directors approved the 202327 strategic plan. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that we say thank you to all of the parents and all of the teachers and all of the administrators who took their time to put effort into this. I mean, I remember when we were still at the library at Liberty and we had post-its up. That is like, and so it's in my memory. So thank you, thank you, thank you to you all. This is the longest and most detailed strategic plan I have ever been a part of and it's been a pleasure. So thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who's listening.
I also just want to say thank you to everyone that participated and also highlight that one, one of the things that I, we received constant feedback during our interview process from different candidates was about our strategic plan and how amazing it was. And also the fact that we even put our subcategories and goals in there as an extra layer of transparency to hold us accountable. So I just want to say kudos to everyone and we are going to do great thing.
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to sound controversial, but just acknowledge that when I started on the board, I was a little bit more of a skeptic of strategic plans just because I've seen some of the research, both in private and public organizations. If it isn't done well and right, they can go on a shelf and be used as talking points every year for an update, but not actually have a practical, real-world impact on the ground. But I've been going over because as Nancy said, there were so many students, so many parents, so many educators, so many staff, so many administrators who contributed to this product. And we were specific about. What we want to see and because of that, I think it will be useful in holding our leadership accountable for providing support to those who work directly with students, make sure that this is action. So I just want to say I did start off a little more skeptical, but I'm very impressed with where we came up.
Any comments? All right. Rose, can you call the role, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Shan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Our next action item involves the purchase of radios. I see Casey joining us online. Hi Casey, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, what you have in front of you is to approve the purchase of transportation radios. This is the actual radios that each of our buses have and also our base stations and some remote units for dispatch and shop supervisors. In addition to updating the repeater and antenna upon on the mountains. As you guys know, the two-way radio is the only means of communication between our buses with students and our home base should anything ever happen. These radios are due for replacement. We are planning to purchase these through the state of Oregon Department of Administrative Services, Oregon Buys Procurement Program. So all of the bidding has already taken place. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the purchase of our bus radios.
Any questions for Casey? When would I like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of a two-way radio system for a total cost of two-hundred-seventy-three-thousand, six-hundred-sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of a two-way radio system for a total cost of two-hundred-seventy-three-thousand, six-hundred-sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the role, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Our next action item involves the new paid leave. Michelle, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add on to what's in the situation page, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this. It is a new leave program. It's a fully insured program. So it's a little bit different. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that tonight.
I have one. Sorry, I didn't get to email this one to you, but I, as I was going through this, the state of Oregon has to approve the equivalent plan ahead of time. So I'm assuming that was done already.
That that portion has been done.
Just wanted to verify.
Yep. And it mirrors their plan completely in terms of employee benefits. And we will be required to continue to report data to the Oregon Employment Department as if we were participating in their plan because they want to track compliance. So all of those pieces are placed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I moved that the Board of Directors approve the paid leave Oregon insurance plan contract with the standard insurance company.
I second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the paid leave insurance plan contract with the standard insurance company. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the role, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Sure. Oh, Jordan even has a microphone. All right. Intent to purchase, Jordan?
Yes, we are looking to replace our two-in-one laptops that were purchased in two thousand eighteen. The pandemic took its toll on them. They're five years old now, but have been heavily used. And I know our staff would like something updated. We're having trouble getting parts for them. And continuing to, we've replaced a few of them, a few specific staff over the last couple of years. And so we could cannibalize the ones we replaced. And so it's just become time that we need to go ahead and get those replaced. We went through a testing process, looked at quite a few different devices, had some teachers test them out in their classrooms and have decided on this device through HP.
Are there any questions for Jordan?
Just what happens with the old? How are they disposed of or are they?
There'll be a number of ways. We might have a few uses for some of the older ones. So we're looking at that. But we recycle all of our technology equipment. We have a recycler that picks up things from us. So the ones we wouldn't immediately use, that would be a very small number, maybe for some specific programs or some type of kiosk-type situations, but most of them would go to the recycle.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just confirming that these are the staff. Is that right?
Yes, they're, the primary portion of them will be for classroom teachers. But there are a number of these same two-in-one Dell tablets out there with both administrators, staff in this building. And so we're replacing all of those as well as some of our older Mac laptops.
Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors acknowledge the notice of intent to purchase of laptops and services from HP Incorporated by use of a cooperative purchasing agreement under the authority of the state of Oregon. ORS two-seven-nine-A, point-two-one-five, permissive cooperative procurement. I'll second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors acknowledged the notice of intent to purchase laptops and services from HP Incorporated by use of cooperative purchasing agreement under the authority of the state of Oregon, ORS two-seven-nine-A, dot-two-one-five, permissive cooperative procurements. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the role?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
Sheen Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. That concludes our action item portion and we are to HCU HEA reports. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, School Board, Chair Watson, Superintendent Scott, and Cabinet members. I am Melody Hanson, President of Hillsborough Classified United. Today, we join the School Board in your excitement to welcome Travis Ryman into his new position as Hillsborough School District Superintendent. During the interview process, we were impressed by Travis's long-term commitment to our community and his desire to see this district thrive. Travis, we look forward to partnering with you in the coming years to ensure HSD continues to be a great place to work for both licensed and classified employees. With Teacher Appreciation Week on the horizon, we want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible passion, hard work, and dedication of our licensed partners at HEA. Every day, the HSD teachers are helping to mold our students into compassionate, successful, and thoughtful young adults. This work requires countless hours preparing lessons, researching new teaching strategies, and finding innovative ways to engage every student. It also requires thick skin, a good sense of humor, and calm in moments of chaos. So to our licensed teammates, we see your hard work and we appreciate you. And we are so proud to partner with such an incredible team of educators. Together, we are creating safe, inclusive, and welcoming learning environment that enable our students to thrive. In addition to our wonderful licensed staff, HSD has an equally wonderful group of classified staff serving our students every day in and day out. Among these staff are our special education assistants who work alongside our teachers to support students in additional learning or behavior needs. Our SEAs are invaluable assets to our team, delivering specialized instructions, collecting data on IEP goals, and managing student behavior and supporting critical needs like feeding and play. Unfortunately, last month, many of our elementary SEAs were notified that their hours would be reduced below the full benefit level of seven hours per day. These employees were given the option to retain their current hours by transferring to a middle or high school or to remain at their elementary school, sacrificing a portion of their pay and benefits. As you can imagine, this is a heartbreaking decision for employees who have dedicated countless years to their school communities while also juggling their own family and financial obligations. Several of these SEAs reached out to us directly to share about their love of their job and their commitment to their students and school communities, but also about the hurt and disappointment they felt as a result of these hourly reductions. We've included statements from three of these employees in the packets that we will share with you tonight. Vice Chair Thomas, last month, you spoke about the need to protect the humans who do the work of caring for the students each day. We know that budget restrictions and involuntary transfers are often an unfortunate reality in the public education system. But as you consider the budget for the coming years, we ask you to prioritize funding for our SEAs and other classified staff. Special education assistants need time to plan and to build relationships with our students. We need training to maintain safe learning environments amidst behavioral challenges. We need financial security and healthcare for our families. We need to be able to put down roots in our school community so we can provide consistent care for the students who need it the most. Most of all, we need your support and your advocacy along with us at the state level so that our district and our employees are not forced to make difficult decisions like the ones these impacting statements will describe. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to partnering with you to advocate on behalf of HSD students and staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow School Board members, Superintendent Scott, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary K. Bathcock. My pronouns are she, her, ea. I'm the president of the Hillsborough Education Association, and I'm a proud educator twenty-six years. This past month and a half, OEA leadership has been advocating for state school funding. I personally spoke to the Ways and Means Committee of the Capitol the first day of spring break. HEA also had a team present at the CC C Selenia Campus in Portland on Saturday evening. I advocated by sharing the following positives of our district's use of state funding. My speech. I would say the silver lining for educators that came from reopening schools post-pandemic in the Hillsborough School District was the ability to offer smaller class sizes that offered the ability to accommodate the social, emotional, and academic needs for all of our students' pay growth. As one can only imagine, post-pandemic, many of our students are still learning how to navigate the significant ramifications of disruptive learning. Sadly, the number of disproportionately, sadly, the numbers are disproportionately higher for our students of color and our students who have severe learning needs. Fortunately, our students that are in literacy intervention programs are being taken care of. We need more of this in our schools. District Y, to provide what is best for all of our students, their families, and the future teachers to fill the learning gap. To meet the needs of all our students, we need more boots on the ground to fill the immense learning loss gap. Let's provide our future Oregonians with more preschool teachers, classroom teachers, reading, writing, math, and science counselors, grad coaches, special education teachers, special education assistants, performing arts and visual arts teachers, health and P teachers, English language development teachers, career and technical education teachers, school psychologists, speech, language pathologists, and school nurses, just to name a few. This funding would also help us afford to continue recruitment efforts for education itself through the Grow Your Own program. Bottom line, we need more educators to serve the student need and to keep our class sizes low. This funding could also be used to provide mentors for new educators, especially our Black Indigenous educators. Hillsborough cannot afford to lose seventy-eight licensed educators or one hundred and thirty-six support staff. We cannot take our students and our future of our state backward in education. For a better Oregon, we must fund our schools ten-point-three billion dollars to stabilize our funding and blaze the trail of success and achievement for the future of Oregon. Part two. Here's my report for our local work. Tonight, I would like to share that I've visited several buildings this spring. I've seen so many educators working every day with passion and commitment to give nothing less than their very best to our students and their families. We see our educators being recognized for their expertise by our district, civic, statewide professional organizations, nonprofits, and so much more. We're observing our students as they're honing their skills resulting in award-winning programs, thanks to educators that care about them and they care about their profession. I love this time of year when we see the results and experience more blue skies resulting in lighter moods and bigger smiles. We are continuing to engage our members on issues that matter to them, and we're addressing working conditions that result in improved learning conditions for our students. It's important that we recognize our educators and tell them and show them how much we appreciate them for all their special and unique gifts that they bring to this profession. Our members work hard. Our members' hard work inspires me to work even harder as their HEA president to support their needs so they can do what they do best, and that's they make a difference. I need to take a moment to brag about our association and how our members are making a difference for educators and students through our union work. HEA recently attended our Oregon Education Association Representative Assembly. We were recognized for increasing our membership at ninety-five percent or higher. Our exact numbers are actually ninety-six-point-one-two percent. I want to thank HSD for collaborating with us to make new hire orientations possible throughout the school year to meet the requirements of House Bill twenty-sixteen. HEA was also recognized for having the most donors contribute to the educational foundation. This foundation helps our students with basic essential needs like shoes, eyeglasses, or winter clothes. HEA was also recognized for being the top donors to the Oregon Education Association Political Action Committee. And speaking of political action, we're super excited to host HEA-endorsed School Board Candidates for a meet and greet on Friday, May fifth, at Noble Hop located downtown Hillsborough. This event will be in collaboration with our Hillsborough Classified United, and we invite all of you to come by and enjoy some Cinco de Mayo-themed hors d'oeuvres, social time with our unions, and meet our candidates that we've endorsed. Sheen Kim, Patrick McGuire, Yvette Pantoila in person. HEA is hosting a booth this year at Proud to be HSD Festival in conjunction with the Hillsborough Farmers Market. Our plan is to inform our members of our solidarity with events, union benefits, and giveaway books to our students. We also plan to have a DIY bookmark activity planned, and we look forward to celebrating our educators and our students at this much anticipated annual event. Lastly, a huge thank you to all our members of the School Board for allowing HEA leadership to participate as a focus group in the HSD superintendent search. We're excited to go on this journey with our new superintendent Travis Ryman. We look forward to continuing our collaboration and our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I could tell you, the board has spent a lot of time just ourselves and many executives. So we are super excited to see all y'all. It's great to be out of our little N even mic. But we are overjoyed to see our students for what it's worth. So you guys are up next. I don't know if you decided who would like to go first.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yvette Alonso Garcia. Just wanted to invite you all for Muberry's Dia del Niño on Thursday from, I believe, five to eight, where we will have games. Mariachi and also, oh, it's going to be a college and career panel thing where there's going to be like different career pathways that Hillsborough, Hillsborough School District offers. I'll be there. So hope to see you all. Also, just wanted to invite you all to do the Do the, sign up for the. Oregon Air Show on the nineteenth, twenty or twenty-one. I'm going to be there volunteering. Hope to see you there. Yes. Also, as the Oregon's worm weather has come, make sure to stay hydrated and wear sunscreen.
Hello, my name is Kaylee McGuire. Um, I feel like I always brag on these, so I'm just going to continue that tradition because I only have two more. So why not? I'd like to thank all of you guys for the opportunity. It's taught me a lot about a more professional setting, especially a leadership. Um, position. I recently am now a legal assistant at a law firm. So I'm now making strides in the law field. I really do owe all of, you know, what I've been doing and getting into the law field to a teacher. Amy Fithlin, she's an economics and soldier studies teacher at Liberty High School. She's brought not only a food closet, a clothes closet, and also have gotten me employed. So I really very much appreciate her. But as I wrap up my years at Liberty High School, I would just like to thank you guys for all the work that you guys do. And all the help that you guys have done for me in my future endeavors. So, thank you.
You. One of his final remaining superintendents.
Wow. Only in Oregon, after one day of screen, sun, do we get remind about sunscreen and staying hydrated. So thank you. Regarding the comments that were made by HCU. Clearly, over the last couple of years, we have been in a situation where enrollment has declined and there's been some tough decisions that have been had to be made around right sizing. And for the first couple of years of that enrollment decline, we, we did not make any adjustments. And now we're in a situation where just budget wise, that's something that we have to do. And it's clear that enrollment across Oregon is going to continue to decline for, for a handful of more years. And keeping the same number of staff on hand is just not going to be feasible budget wise for us. So. You are going to see some changes in the class size and you'll also see some changes in the hours and. That I think the one correction I did want to make is that for those folks that had some of those thirty minutes reduced. There was the option to transfer to another school in order to keep those hours and that does, even the reduction of that half hour does remain at the same benefit level. Which was important to us. There's a few cases in which when the benefit level was going to change, there was, it was a mutual decision to do that and it was. After an option to transfer had been given. So I just wanted to throw that information out there as well. On a much better note, the strategic plan process, I echo much of what Nancy said, the, the work that went into that and the, it was really. Beth and Travis that shepherd most of that through. And so really appreciate, appreciate their efforts to, to have a great process. And while oftentimes it's expected that the administrators and the board participate in a process like that. I want to give a special shout out to our classified staff, our licensed staff and our community members who participated. They put in a ton of hours on that as well and their, their perspective is just incredibly helpful. Third item, there was an article in the paper here these last couple of days about the, the idea that the city of Hillsborough is exploring the potential of a partnership with the school district to. Put some turf in at RA Brown Middle School and to improve the playing fields there. We received some emails about them. I think board members, you, you might as well. And the thing to keep in mind is that this is just an exploratory process that's happening at this moment. There will be no agreement until the board has an opportunity to weigh in. And also keep in mind that it's not like the city came to us with a bunch of cash and said, hey, what do you want to do with this? And this has to be something that works not only for the city of Hillsborough, but also for the school district as well. And that's why specifically the RA Brown site is being the one that's explored. There's been some notion that we could take a certain amount of money and parcel that out to different schools and different fields and that. That's not, that wouldn't be a benefit to the city in the same way that having it in one location would. So wanted to put that out there as well. Teacher Appreciation Week on the horizon. Excited to thank those folks for everything that they do on behalf of our students. Speaking of thanking people, the school board, the amount of time that you put into that superintendent search absolutely amazing. And I think it's a great example of the decisions that school boards make, those impact students, those impact staff and those impact community members. And your commitment to a thorough process. That, that was adhered to a rigorous process was incredibly impressive. So thank you for all of the work that you did on that. And I know that. Took time away from your family, lots of time away from your family. So appreciate that. And to Travis, congratulations. It is, it's well deserved. I think one of the things that I would want people to know about Travis is his commitment to the Hillsborough School District. Is second to none. He has applied for exactly one superintendent job in his life. And it was this one. And that's because his family is part of the community. He is, he's. He just ingrained here in a way that not many, not many folks are. So he loves this district and this community. I look forward to seeing the great things that are going to happen in the district in our next session.
Thank you. Thank you. Sheen, do you have anything you would like to add tonight?
I just wanted to say happy Teacher Appreciation Week coming up and. There's a lot of, sorry, there's a lot of exciting things happening with us passing, approving the strategic plan and. Welcoming Travis on board. So just all smiles here. Congratulations again to Travis. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, anything to share tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to share since we had to leave. One of the things that she had emailed me before is there's going to be a. A dance at Sentry and I will be chaperoning with Fran. It's going to be a Latin music dance and very exciting. So I'm sure that that's something that she would have wanted to highlight tonight. And she's been doing a lot of work. And volunteering a lot of hours to prepare for that. So very exciting for Sentry students. And I think the, the only other thought, I have two more thoughts, but I'll end with a probably one. The, the other thing I think to the conversation about people, I understand especially as the weather starts getting nicer and there's a lot of activities and. You know, baseball activities and the ideas, there's going to be a lot of. I think speculation and rumoring about the fields and that is a challenge in our community and that we don't have enough. Spaces or even spaces that are maintained. And for many of you that saw our budget presentation earlier. Think almost like eighty-three percent of our budget goes to personal cost. So we don't have that additional kind of money to just create, you know, a new field and. Initially, I think the fields that we do have at Ron Tonkin. Those are made with that purpose, knowing that need is out there. So the need will continue to exist and will be even more now that. If the plans proceed and when we don't have access to those anymore. So. I just want to highlight that that is something that we, we know has been a challenge in the past and is going to continue. And so I. I'm hopeful that there's productive conversation and advocacy to help our district because again, that is not money that we have to spend. We weren't. Spending on, on that. So just, just for the community that has been reaching out and asking about that. We hear you and we understand that that's a concern. And then the other thing, I just also want to echo and say thank you, Rose, for all of your work that you do for our board. And tomorrow's Administrator's Professionals Day. And so that's one of the reasons we wanted to give you a special shout out to you, but also to. All of our district staff that works on that front desk role and how a lot of times they are the face of that particular school. Till this day, my kids still see the front desk person from W Henry and will recognize them. And they, even though their faces change, you know, a lot, but it's wonderful that we have that in our community. So thank you to all our admins out there.
Thank you. Monique, anything to share?
Just to say again, thank you to the community because there was a lot of community input on the superintendent search. There were a lot of pages of comments. To read and, and go through. Also, again, echo everyone else with Rose and, and Kathy doesn't get mentioned too often, but she also helps out with the board, some board stuff. So. Thankful for that. Congratulations to you Travis for your new role. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lisa, anything to share tonight?
I think we've heard enough from Lisa tonight, so I'll pass.
Okay, Patrick.
I briefly want to say I too, like Monique was very impressed with the amount of community feedback and engagement we got in. In the superintendent search and I think it gave me a greater perspective even outside of that particular application of. Things that were on the mind of the different groups in our community that we asked for feedback from. So. Knowing some of the ways that some parents would like to be more engaged was really helpful. And also. Many teachers and those who work directly with students told me, said in that feedback in my process of getting outreach. How they're really excited about the things we have and do here in the Hillsborough School District. There were a few who said, you know, sometimes we wish central office decisions were a little more collaborative or communicated a little differently and. One person said a slogan, nothing about us without us. And that was something that became popular in the nineteen nineties as a disability rights slogan, people who focus disabilities. Talking about not wanting people to design, the government to design programs for them, wanting to be involved with the design. But I think since then it's become widely used in a variety of contexts and. So I think we, we, our leadership here works to do that. I think that hearing that feedback, something I intend to advocate with our next superintendent for is to continue to make strides in that. Area of getting collaborative pre decision-making feedback from teachers and those who work directly with students. And then after communicating decisions, the reasons for decisions very clearly. So I appreciate getting that feedback. I think that. We have to, we're balanced in this district and acknowledging the things that we do so well and not taking those for granted. But at the same time, being willing to continue to take feedback and find ways to, on behalf of our students, you can even get better. So it's really a productive process and thank you to you.
Yes, Ian, can you share it up?
I would like to acknowledge that I greatly underestimated the emotional toll of a national superintendent search. The board spent an incredible amount of time in the selection process. But we did it without the presence of our beloved SCU board members. We did it without the president, the, without the presence of the staff. And the cabinet and we did it without the presence and the touch point of Mike that I've gotten really, really comfortable with. We've missed you all and I mean, it was so nice to be up in the room when you're all there. I will say that we are thrilled to have concluded this. And we're thrilled to continue this journey with our new leadership. And we will be here to guide and support you Travis in your new role. I'd like to say happy nurses appreciation to all of those medical professionals who are serving our children. I have six nurses in my family and I have a deep appreciation for nurses. Of course, a happy teacher appreciation as well. To all of you all that are here, especially our board members who are teachers, who were trying to get back to Hillsborough. I won't say that again. But, and then also I say that because my sister is a teacher in the state of Georgia and she teaches English in high school. So I always think of her first. And always when I'm talking to you guys. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your vote in the upcoming election. And thank you so much and so much love to both and happy for keeping me on track all the time I've missed a lot. So.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Rose. Really. We cannot do this without you. And yeah, thanks to the community for all the input and to all my board members for all the extra time. Travis has probably been congratulated enough. So I will congratulate the community of the Hillsborough School District on having a tremendously invested new leader. For, for our school district going forward. So congratulations to all of us. For, for having somebody so invested in the Hillsborough community as our next superintendent. From my board members, I will share one of the, one of the interesting side effects of the search was getting to be in our buildings. With our candidates a few times, well, a bunch of times. And I would say. Before the pandemic, I think it's something we all did quite a bit was visit buildings, coordinate with the principal and, and I have. Me, me personally, don't speak for anybody else, I have felt. Somewhat reluctant to do that because it felt burdensome, like they had so much going on that I didn't want to bother anybody like. Prepare for a school board member visit or whatever. But being in the buildings and talking directly to principals sort of has changed my mind on it. I think they would welcome visits. They would love to have us in the building. I think they, all of our schools have a sense of pride to show off the great work they're doing. And for a board member to come and be someone to whom they can show it off is, I think incredibly rewarding. So whereas I, I felt like getting back out there might. Inconvenience a bunch of people. I didn't want to do it. I think. I would encourage you to get back out there and, and visit buildings again. It's, it's time to get back out. It's great. That's about it. Our next meeting is May ninth and work session upstairs. We are adjourned.